It's like we've been saying that a lot. Okay. Roll call, please.
Bastian.
Here.
Clark.
Here.
Fish.
Here.
Housman.
Here.
Parsons.
Present.
Wakefield.
Here.
Alright, we have a quorum. Have a motion to approve the agenda, please.
So moved.
Motion by Parsons, second by Clark, to approve the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Alright, moving on. Visitors and timed items. Do we have anyone in the, in the chamber that would like to address the council at this time? You have up to five minutes. No takers? Okay. No takers, moving on. We will move on then to the budget. Proposed budget for 2019.
Week, and the visitors and timed items, public comment portion has dominated the discussion with everybody, yes. Do you put it at the beginning? Do you put it at the end? Do you have to do it for special meetings? What about a Christmas party? What about? Yeah. It's causing some heartburn. Anyway, we'll just go through the highlighted changes on the budget. First page, we did bump up the sales tax to 2.9 million. Interesting discussion on that today at the first-class mayor's meeting. I don't think there's anybody, at least in the first-class cities, that are anticipating a huge uptick in sales tax revenues, even with Amazon or internet purchasing.
I'm seeing a lot of shit over there. So far.
So you think it's true?
Um, yeah, I mean, we're trying to get close to that balanced budget. You know, we've been over 2.9 for the last two years. We're anticipating something over three this year. So, you know, unless the economy tanks really terribly, the trade wars continue on, the tariffs continue on, and they start hitting home a little bit closer, we do keep an eye on that during the year, so if they start going south a little bit, we certainly can rein in spending, but. Next change on page three, just a minor change for looking at shelter reservations in the parks, started to charge for those. I don't think it's gonna make or break us, but.
I had a count, 64 last year.
The going rate for reserving a shelter is gonna be?
Park boards discuss anywhere from $5 an hour and up to like a half, you know, and then a half a day would actually charge a charge, so that needs to be discussed yet and finalized on what they'll charge. I think Sioux Falls is 25. Yeah.
On page five, the street maintenance fund. If we're going to, and we may skip around here a little bit, the handout I gave you, the estimated cost of a mill and overlay on Fourth Street from Aspen to Holly is about 300,000. So when we put this together last week, we only put one, for I only put 150 in the street maintenance fee for that mill and overlay, so we'd certainly need to bump that street maintenance fee up to probably $2.
It's a jump.
Yep, it's a pretty big jump.
And the vermin is 175, right?
Yep. You know, I'd encourage you to go drive the streets. I drove them this afternoon when I got back. It's gonna be more of a political decision. I'm not, from an infrastructure standpoint, I don't think that we need to do the entire length of the street. We certainly have some bad areas, primarily between Cedar and Dogwood, where all of the water is, where all of the water flows on Fourth, Fifth, Sixth, Elm, and Cedar, et cetera. They can certainly use an overlay, but north and south of those areas, they're not in really any worse shape than any of the other streets in the core part of town. So, go ahead and drive those, see what you think, but in between, like I said, Elm and Dogwood, roughly, Cedar. Beechnut, Beechnut, thank you.
So this assessment, is that only for improvements or just?
It's for maintenance.
So we could raise it here.
Correct.
So like on a typical house, how much more is that a year?
Well, your typical lot, at least in the newer parts of town, is 80, 85 feet wide, typically is what we're seeing most. I mean, some of the stuff in Justin's is gonna be 60 to 65 to 70 feet wide. Here in the older part of town, you're probably looking at the wider lots, maybe pushing 100 on some of them.
Bucks total.
Yeah, so between 20 and 50 bucks, depending on the width of.
Addition.
Yeah.
Twenty to fifty dollars addition.
Yeah.
Per year.
For the year.
Not more, per year. That's okay.
So, and we'll get into the mill and overlay as we go along, but we'll need to take a look at that if we wanna balance that out. Page seven, we've got, we'll need to transfer in 12,366 into the Country Club Heights, which is the last year of that bond issue. On page nine, we bumped up the sewer, we need a minimum of 4% to make sewer cash flow, at least even, and that's one of the next work sessions we'll have, is on sewer projects and sewer and water rates. So those are, that's the minimum that we'd need for now.
That's just a pass.
Yep.
So I just wanted to, I don't know if this is the right spot, but one of the things that's kind of been brought up is storm sewer and having a storm sewer fee on the water and sewer bill. So later in the expenses, we have an expense that shows up to do a storm sewer master drainage plan, I think it's 150,000. So if you look at some of the communities around us, they have storm sewer fees up to $5 or maybe even a little more on each utility bill, so $5 a month, and then that would end up making about $200,000 in revenue if you figure $5 times 12 is 60, times 3,300 users, so something to also think about if we're looking at potential revenue sources, not only on changing the rates for the street assessments, but storm sewer's gonna be something that's gonna come up, and having that extra 200,000 a year sure would be helpful.
We've talked about storm sewer utility fee off and on for a few years. Well, it was another fee that some council members weren't comfortable with charging.
Are we better off to do a fee or like go like 6%?
Well, I think you wanna keep your sewer and your storm sewer separate. They're two separate systems as far as I'm concerned. I think as south, storm sewer fees in Minnesota and Iowa are much more common than here in South Dakota, I think a South Dakota place catch up with storm sewers, because storm sewers haven't been a big deal in South Dakota for a while. I think as more cities are in the same boat as us, trying to retrofit existing neighborhoods with storm sewers, how do you pay for those? It's, I wouldn't recommend special assessing storm sewers. The first court case I was ever involved with was a storm sewer, and it was in Minnesota, but the storm sewer fee, or storm sewer assessments were set aside for the people at the top of the hill, but not the people at the bottom of the hill, because the people at the bottom of the hill were getting flooded, not the people at the top of the hill, so they received no benefit, even though it was their water that was flooding out the people at the bottom of the hill. So we, that was in Kenya, Minnesota, we actually implemented a storm sewer fee to pay off those special assessments that were set aside by the court case. So, I think it's something that we're probably gonna have to take a look at as we look at, well, if you look at Bethany Drainage, we've got about 100,000 out there that we have to do. We've got out in the Bluffs, we've got that whole drainage way that we're gonna have to figure something out with, cutting trees down, clearing brush, et cetera.
At what point do we start the process to?
It's gonna take a little bit of time, because there's an inventory that needs to take place by the engineering firm. Typically, what you do is you set up your base storm sewer fee on the average residential lot, and you give that a factor of, let's say, a dollar, or a cost of a dollar, and then the engineering calculations have been set up for quite a while as to, okay, if you've got a commercial industrial property, that's gonna have much more runoff than a typical residential lot, so there's a multiplying factor. Same thing with churches, schools, industrial, et cetera. It kinda goes square footage. You figure out your normal lot is 80 by 100, so it's 8,000 square feet, and then you just multiply up based upon, it takes some time, go ahead, it takes some time to inventory your parcels.
For months, years?
Months.
I think it's, I think it's, it's a little bit of a learning curve. It's usually a cost per square foot, and it's weighted based on your type of runoff you have, and we've, there's other communities that have it in place, and so what you would do is you'd take some of their examples and try to implement it here, and I think it's actually, it's probably easy to do, it'd be nice to do it when you have your drainage study done, because as part of your drainage study, you're gonna be identifying some of these, and you can justify then your rate increases then, or the, because it is a tax, it's another tax that you're adding on, and so if you do the storm sewer assessment fee per square foot for a residential house or a lot, it's gonna be so many dollars, and you can start out low, but if you take your, the intent for that comprehensive drainage study was to, you know, identify problem areas and things like that, and once you've identified those problem areas, you can say, okay, how are we gonna pay for these improvements? And then that'd be a way to implement it, because you'd have a reason to implement it then. Because right now, I mean, right now, we're subsid, aren't we using, for any storm sewer project, you're coming out of general fund, right? And that's probably okay to continue going that way, it's just that, you know, it'd be nice to have a revenue stream for maintenance of drainage in backyards, because they continue to come up and it's continued.
Well, as we go through the core part of town, we're planning on extending storm sewer up, third, fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, to catch that water so it doesn't run all the way down, or something down here at the bottom of.
So not to get something, at what point do we as council, okay, move on?
Probably wait, you know, if we do the master drainage study, that kinda sets it up, otherwise, we could certainly implement it anytime you wanted to, based upon current expenditures or anticipated expenditures, you know, like I said, we're looking at, well, redwood was 250,000, we're looking at, you know, another 200,000 in drainage maintenance, so there's 450,000.
So kinda building off of what Chuck's saying, if we just, as council, wanted to try and have additional revenue of half a million dollars, let's say, to cover those projects, and then would we put that in this budget? Would it be its own enterprise fund, or how do we do that?
Yep.
Because it'd be, I guess, nice to have some of that visibility, and, you know, if we're looking at trying to raise that, you know, and it's, there's obviously some that that needs to happen on per square foot, or however we're gonna handle it, but, you know, that's the type of thing where if we wanted to try to cover some of those expenses, now'd be the time to.
I think if you want, I mean, that's something we could, I mean, we could help Brian and Tammy come up with some examples of other communities, if they want us to help with that, because we've been involved with some of those, whether it's Lenox or Harrisburg, there's some of these other communities have them, and it's cost per square foot, there's different ways of doing it, so I think you as policymakers are gonna have to be the ones that make that decision, how you wanna implement that, but we can get you some examples of other communities if you'd like.
Well, I guess we could always put something in there, it doesn't mean we have to do it. Are you saying put it in as a, you know, saver kinda thing? Place saver?
We should put it in as a placeholder, and then, you know, we've got, when it comes to expenses, we've got 150,000, I think it was, for that drainage plan, we've got 250,000 worth of redwood, that would be storm sewer, we've got 100,000 out at Bethany Meadows Drainage, so, I mean, we've got quite a few, and it kinda changes how, you know, where those would come out of, but just so we can start getting the visibility of what's storm sewer versus what's other projects, so that, you know, not to add another enterprise fund to Christina to track, but just something so we can start seeing what our expenditures are, even if it's zero revenue next year, at least we can see next year how much belongs to the storm sewer, and then we could put something in that next year for income.
Christina looked it up, it would be a special revenue fund. We'd certainly need to keep it separate from the, mixing, intermingling with the general fund, I mean, it'd be in the general fund, but it'd be a special revenue fund, so we need to keep track of it. There is certainly some public education that needs to take place before the implementation.
I think a lot of the reasoning why it's kinda been held off too is because, if you remember right, we've added the street maintenance, or the street light on there, that's kinda happened over the last few years, took a pretty large increase in the sewer fund, water funds gone up too, so I think that was hesitation in past council too, as we made some changes on that bill.
I might be.
Mm-hmm. Yep. So we can start looking at a storm sewer utility fee.
I'd kinda like to keep that street assessment at 175 rather than go to the 2.
Okay.
I don't know how you guys feel, but, you know.
So it's at 150?
Yep.
We're gonna do something like this, plus then we gotta have the sewer increase, I'm sure we're gonna have a water increase, you know, kinda nickels and dimes are people.
Page 10, golf course. Went back and looked at the projected revenue for 19 based upon the last two years averages.
So the last four years, if you did it on that, the, what we'd have to contribute would be around 89,000. So it's a number between 89 and 350. 350 is a really worst-case scenario, based on two years. Four years, 89. So somewhere in between, that's the best guess, so I'm supportive of that 350, that's a very conservative estimate.
All depends on mother nature.
Yep. Yep. Yeah, we try to take a look at the four-year historicals and then some trends that we see, you know, for instance, the wedding, the wedding revenue, we know that the wedding bookings are down compared to previous years.
I mean, you guys are able to do that, do we give that to Carrie and Zane and go, what do you guys think?
Right. Yeah.
They do?
Yep.
Okay.
Alright. Some tweaks on the expenditure side. Page 14, we'll start there. Professional services in the council. We've talked a little bit about media consultants or social media folks, we added, shot in the dark, 25,000 of that, so I have no idea what, what a media consultant will cost.
So that would be engineering and media is kinda how that's split up for the professional services?
Yep. 50,000 for engineering, our force account, and then 25,000 for media services. Tweak the mayor's salary a little bit. Page 15, the Parks Committee, the Planning and Zoning Board, that reflects the $40 per That's why Mindy's here, to make sure the Parks gets the 40.
I don't need your family, right?
Page 18, general government buildings. We included the space needs study for 20,000, and then we upped the repairs to City Hall by another 20. Police administration, page 19. Reflects an adjustment in wages, because I think we missed somebody, didn't we?
Um, yeah, just getting, try to get it more accurate, and then not knowing how the new chief is gonna work, if we're gonna overlap that or not, so I just wanna make sure I got enough in there for that.
So on page 18, excuse me, go ahead. I just, question, when will the space needs study be available?
We'll start it in January, because it'll start with that, the 19 budget. Christina doesn't like it when we start a project in the year before, because it makes her job pain, by government accounting.
Sorry.
I don't know, what do we?
Any services done in 18 has to be in 18 budget, so. January 1st.
So we'll probably start the selection process later this year, maybe November-ish, start it, get the RFPs out.
So then on page 20, we've got the video camera, radio systems. I heard that Sioux Falls just got a pretty big grant for body cams and that kinda stuff.
Yankton just got one.
And Yankton got one too. So, have we applied for grants to get those or anything like that? Do we know?
We have, but they all, what they all cover is the.
Every money's good money, that's all I'm saying.
I have talked to DCI, I haven't put together a letter yet. What they cover is the cost of the camera themselves, primarily the body camera, and in our case, it'd be 13 of those, breaking out the costs from this Axon, we haven't quite done that yet. There is a long list of people that, departments that have already submitted, so we would just be on that list at some point. But it's not something that would cover the full amount of the contract. The contract also includes the cloud storage and then a ongoing replacement program, so.
Page 23, Public Works, you don't get a $40,000 space needs study, you can get by with 20, just like we do.
So kinda on the, on the, yeah, you need a lot of space. Just draw a big rectangle, Raleigh, it'll be okay. Yeah. So we've had a lot of talk about, like on the tractor and the aerator from, for the golf course, we're financing that, and then we've got this front-end loader here for 200,000. I don't know if that would benefit us, I know when we're trying to find a budget, a balanced budget, that's a pretty sizable piece of equipment, and the last one, Raleigh milked out for 12 years, 10 years? Too long, older? 11 years? So, that might be something that, I don't know if that benefits us as a community to look at financing that, but Chuck's brought that up a few times, so I just thought maybe I'd ask that question, it would give us probably a pretty sizable amount of cash to float for this budget.
We did lease, when this one was purchased, I think it was a three-year lease, if I remember right. Lease purchase. Yep.
So I have a quick question on the wages. It shows the plus raises on this one. I know that that was one that we talked about with the wage and benefit study. How about police? It doesn't say plus raises over there.
There's all, all the departments have a, just kinda throw in a dollar amount, because we don't, just in case, but there's, in all departments that have overtime, there's a percentage of overtime in there, and then there is just a amount for raises in there.
Are you just, back to like a, what, did I tell police?
That's figured in, so costs, our January 1 increase is figured in, and then they, we do a January 1, and then we do anniversary date, so those are all figured in, and then this would be above and beyond that, kind of a just-in-case kind of amount.
When you said you forgot somebody, that's why I went up, I'm just wondering if that's enough.
In police department? Yeah, it's enough. I forgot him last year, not this year. Did you notice last year's, between last year's and this year, there's a large increase?
Page 24, we get back to storm sewer, we've got the 150,000 for the master drainage plan, and then we've got $100,000 for the sunrise detention in the Bluffs.
So this is where that 250,000 would be pretty handy with revenue?
So what in the Bluffs?
That drainage way that comes down through the Bluffs, that, we've looked at it for the last couple of years. Once we figure out what we're doing out there, we're really gonna have to meet with the folks and let them know what the, yep, because there will be pushback, you know, they look at that as kind of a natural area. We look at that as a drainage way that needs to be a free-flowing path for water. You know any damages that would occur because that stream is clogged, or that drainage way is clogged up due to trees, or brush, or cattails, we would, we would be liable for? At least that's what the court rulings say. No sheds, yeah, sheds. Then we get into the big animal control and pest budgets, rec center, swimming pool. We got the splash pad study that we talked about a little bit, the splash pad reserve is down at the bottom of the page, another one of Christina's things, and then the software maintenance.
So then on the boiler and the doors and lights, those are pretty much end of life, right? Ready? It's go time?
Pretty much.
Okay, that's all I need, thank you.
Little hunches, boiler's out?
Parks Department, got a little tweak for the insurance.
Really property casualty?
Yeah. Yep. Property casualty. List number one, I should've brought my old one.
Real quick on here, can you help me understand what, like, there's several accounts, 426-30-32, there are supplies for the ball fields, flag football, hockey, soccer, tennis, can you help me understand what those supplies are?
Oh, for instance, flag football, paint, field paint, for striping their fields. Aspen ball fields, that's gonna be anywhere.
Paint, chalk, bases, nets, all that kinda thing.
Same thing with soccer, large, a good chunk of that is paint, is.
Is that something that we can be working with the associations to bring in some revenue that way, so that they can help cover the burden of that, because it's due to their use kinda thing, or?
Yep, the park committee's been working on that for a couple of years now, we started tracking these expenditures a couple of years ago, so that we can have a, before they were just under supplies, so we've been tracking those. We're in, next year will be year four of a five-year agreement with those associations, so we've started talking to them about increasing their funding to us. so we've started talking to them about increasing their funding to us, or charging them fees to cover our costs.
And if they, if, I don't know if we could work with, we're looking at that lawn mower for twenty-two thousand, and that's pretty much for the soccer fields, it'd be nice if there's any chance that the soccer association would wanna do some fundraising to help, how does that work, if that would come together? Could the soccer buy it, and we run it, I mean, what's that look like?
I'd hesitate to... require them to pay for it, because what happens with the associations, and it happens all over the place, is if we pay for it, it's ours. It doesn't leave the soccer fields, and I'm not picking on soccer, but no, you can't go mow the rest of McCarty Park with it. So... Yeah, what I'm saying is, if, if, if we go to soccer or baseball and say, hey, we want you to contribute half of this mower, then they're gonna, they, they have a tendency to get a little parochial.
Yeah, I get that, I just, it's kinda a bad deal, and, I mean, yeah, we use it in different parks, but it'd be nice to help have some additional funding to pay for that, and I know we're in a contract, but it might not be a bad idea to at least ask the question if there's some fundraising that they could do to try and help offset some of this cost, because we're, by the time you add up all those supplies and that mower, you're getting to be a pretty sizable amount in our budget.
Uh, what did we cut out of list one, I can't remember?
Can we just reallocate it?
Yes, that's right. It went, it went to the hockey. That's right.
Yeah, 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 yeah. And so, there was some discussion about hockey, so hockey did have public, um, ice time this winter, over a hundred and twenty hours, but to Tim's point, he did point out that they charge some for a hockey player or open skate, correct? You were there? And so, I think it would be good if we asked hockey for a report on that, and just see how much, you know, I can't imagine they had a lot of revenue, but they might've had some, see how much revenue they had, and what their experience was, and if there's an opportunity to have free skate without any cost, I think that would be appropriate to ask them of.
Yeah, and I think one of the other challenges was, the original Brandon Public Skating Rink got taken over, I mean, we just plowed it over and put the new one, so, when that happened, we lost it, and then this year, they never flooded the other rink, um, and I think Devin, you said you would've loved to flood it, but it never was told that you could, so, um... So we need to get that clarified, because if, if the city's gonna take over the other outdoor rink, the non-chilled one, then we could potentially use that a, as, uh, free skate time and that kinda thing. You know, I guess personally, I have a, a lot of heartburn with another hundred thousand to the hockey association, um, seventy-five thousand last year, and, and they're already moving out of that facility, and a lot of that, they can't get back. You know, it's went through electrical and a lot of other things that really are for the not, um, so I'd like to see some more use out of that before we go and, and, um, move on to something else. And then when you look at the, the association itself, there's a lot of kids there, uh, and we're pulling kids from out of town, but the vast majority of those kids are not Brandon kids, or maybe it's fifty-fifty, um, but it'd be interesting to see what our true return on investment is on, on that, um, hundred thousand, or, no, a hundred and seventy-five, um, and if it's a long-term solution, that really the hockey association needs a million dollars to do what they're doing, uh, and they're gonna want to keep pushing the city for maybe a hundred thousand a year, uh, at some point, it's better just to go to a public vote and let the public decide if it's a, a hockey association builds a, a city, uh, facility, or whatever it is, so I guess I still have a lot of heartburn on that, a hundred thousand.
Well, on the outdoor, the, um, refrigerated rink, so they raised about five hundred thousand, we contributed seventy-five thousand. Um, for the new rink, it's a million seven, and we're looking at a hundred thousand, so the Park Board came forward with this recommendation, you know, you can, you know, that's, that's where they feel that we should be putting the money, and of course, that's a council decision, but it is a recommendation from Park Board.
So is there some stipulation?
Right, and you have to come with the money.
Mindy Hansen, three seventeen Switchgrass Trail, Representative of the Park Board. The hockey association has or is obtaining the financing to get started on their indoor rink. The hundred thousand dollars is what we feel is adequate to begin the utilities to the indoor facility. So they are raising the big, the vast majority of what they are gonna need to put up that building, and that indoor facility. Some of the, the things that they have down at Aspen, at McCarty Park right now, can be moved to Aspen, um, the chiller, the boards, those kind of things will be moved to Aspen, is their plan, to then continue having an outside rink down there as well, to get their two sheets in, to, to utilize what they feel that they can in that space.
So would we, we aren't putting in the utilities till they get all their money raised?
Right, we wouldn't spend the money unless they came to us and said, we're ready to dig. At that point, we have to be, have the money available to say, yep, we can run your utilities to that position.
So if they don't get their money raised this year, this just, will it just keep rolling on?
Keeps rolling on, yes, but it is my understanding that they were on the verge of closing, um, for the, that funding, the last time I...
For the whole million?
Mm-hmm. For the building.
And just for clarification, with the seventy-five thousand that the city's already given, and we have the ability to transfer some of the equipment, do we happen to have an idea of what the actual true value of what the city then has, uh, given to them in terms of what will save, or, so, you know, if we're comparing apples to apples, seventy-five thousand, you know, what will be left there?
It's not something that we're gonna save, but I, it's my understanding, it is something that they, you know, to get their two sheets down at Aspen Park, that they can move some of that material, the, the chiller, and the boards, and things like that, that they can move that down there. They also put in substantial man-hours to get McCarty Park to the position that they could run their, their league last year, and there was a lot of things that had to be canceled due to weather still, even with the chiller, but it was better than the year before, when we didn't have it. As far as your public or open skate, open hockey, Sioux Falls charges for that, um, you know, baseball charges for tournaments, soccer charges for tournaments, you know, so if you're looking, and Park Board is looking at redoing those agreements, so that if you are charging for the use of those fields, or things like that, that some of that money does come back to the city, I mean, that is prudent, and that has been something that has been addressed for many years. But, um, you know, i- if you take a look at their, the hockey calendar last year, they were filled every weekend, and yes, some of their kids do come from Sioux Falls, but that's parents coming to Sioux Falls that may stop at the gas station, they may stop at a restaurant and pick up something to eat on their way home, so that's tax dollars to the city. So yeah, it's not all Brandon kids, they're hoping to grow that Brandon Association with Brandon kids, but by bringing in those Sioux Falls kids, you are bringing outside tax dollars to Brandon. So, I hope that clarifies, any, any other questions?
So, um, there's, uh, tomorrow at five o'clock, Kraft is making the presentation of a thirty thousand dollar check, correct?
Correct, correct, yep, they, uh, they applied and were awarded second place for the thirty thousand dollar check, and I know that they are applying again, now that they have building funding secured and want to start digging, that they are applying again to the Kraft for another, for another grant this year. Yeah, so they, they are working.
So, uh, correction, uh, the chiller, it's my understanding the chiller's trash, um, that it's not working, and they're gonna have to get a whole new one, as, so, they've got, they already bought anyone? Because there's one down there now that's junk, right? Okay, so, um... So, um, it just... I don't know, for some reason, it, it still bothers me, just the fact that if we would've hesi, if they would've hesitated a year on the outdoor, all that money that we gave would've went towards Aspen, and I'm, there's woulda, shoulda, couldas, but...
Coming back to that, they couldn't wait a year. Um, Sioux Falls didn't have enough ice time for them to continue to rent ice in Sioux Falls, so their only other option would've been to continue to use that outdoor rink in which they canceled, I believe, sixty percent of their practices and games in two thousand seventeen, sixteen, seventeen, because of weather, it's, gets too warm, the lines get hot, the ice melts, it's not able to be used, and Sioux Falls last year was not able to accommodate them with any ice time, so they would've either had to quit their program or go back and reduce their, their practice times, their game schedules, things like that, um, because they didn't have any other place to go. So yes, would it have been ideal to certainly push it back a year? Absolutely, but if you want a program to continue to grow, you can't take a year off, otherwise you lose all that interest.
No, I agree, um, but I know I've talked to a couple people in the association, and Sioux Falls did have hockey time, so, um, I'm just gonna leave it alone for now, but my stance is, I don't agree.
Any other questions?
How much should they cha, how much were you guys charging for coming in and open skate?
I don't know, I'm not part of the hockey association. I have no idea. In, in Sioux Falls, it's ten dollars, I believe it's for open hockey, I'm not exactly sure what it is for open skate. So, I don't know.
I understand Tim's concerns, I, I guess I'm still supportive of the hundred thousand, I think it goes to a quality of life for the kids, and about that.
Uh, twenty-nine, we didn't make any tweaks, but just a reminder, the ash trees, another topic of discussion today, at the mayor's meeting. Nothing other than everybody's very nervous, it's going to be a big number. I think, uh, Sioux Falls thinks it's about thirty or forty percent of their trees, yeah. The mayor of Aberdeen has six of them in his yard, so. Page thirty, debt retirement, we include in there the operating transfer out to the golf course, and that's, you know, like Chuck said, that would probably be worst case, and then there's a transfer to the country club, the twelve thousand for the country club transfer. Third cent sales tax. No. That wouldn't be paid out unless, you know, the Development Foundation submitted a bill for it. Yep. The other nice thing, um, with Brandon compared to other cities, which is another topic for discussion today, pretty timely, um, between their third cent sales tax and their community promotion, um, other cities that are first-class cities that are our size, um, pay out hundreds of thousands of dollars a year to non-city-related functions, um, be it mental health, uh, you name it, they get requests like crazy, it was, it was unbelievable, the numbers that they were tossing out. So... Now page thirty-two, that, that street improvements, the street maintenance fund, you know, if we did all of Fourth Street, it'd be three hundred thousand, and if you wanted to continue on with Fifth, Sixth, Seventh, whatever, um, it would run in that numbers, uh, once we get up to Eighth Street, yeah, it would be smaller, because Eighth Street's a little bit shorter. You know, looking at a timeline, just wrote one down real quick, you know, if we continue on with our, with our plan, we'll do, and next year, we'll do the South Main and Dogwood Sewer. In two thousand and twenty, uh, depends on how it would work out better, we'd either do the Cardinal area, or the North Main, finish off Main, and then two thousand and twenty-one would be the one we didn't do, and then two thousand and twenty-two would be first, two thousand and twenty-three would be second, two thousand and twenty-four would be third, two thousand and twenty-five would be fourth. So yeah, it's, it's six years out, but do you really wanna spend three hundred thousand dollars today to tear it up in six year, plan to tear it up in six years?
The side roads that you mentioned, they're not on the map, would that account for like roughly fifty percent of what's in purple here? For the ones that you said were really bad with the water?
No. You know, if you look at Fourth, um, if you took off the area north of Elm and included Elm, that's about equal, because I think if you, if you drive it, and you should, Elm is, is in not good shape either, due to the drainage, and then, you know, if you come down to, and I can't, Beach Nut, et cetera, if we were gonna do those overlays, uh, it would be more than the three hundred thousand showing, but it's, it's basically a four to six-block area, right smack dab in the middle of, of the core part of town, down to the drainage way, uh, south of the elementary school.
So based on that, is there any way to do like a, a storm improvement project that would take out that four-block area to get all that storm mitigated, and then, uh, keep it off to the sides of the streets, so it's not in the middle of the street, so if we come back for sewer later, we don't impact that, and then do you just do a, a partial patch or something like that, or? Just to think differently, because if we don't fix the issue, we're gonna keep having the bad streets, and the issue is the storm runoff, um, so how do we get the storm out of there, do we just do a, a primary storm project that's, you're not touching the, the sewer and the water, you're just going after the s, the storm and putting it off out of the way? I've done that before, I guess.
John Brown, uh, sorry, I didn't mention my name before, I think everybody knows me, but with Stockwell, but, back to the storm sewer, when we get to intersections, we always have crossings anyway, so keep in mind that we can try all we want to try to get it to one side, the running length is fine, it's just we'll always have our crossings to get inlets on both sides, so we still will have, uh, I don't, I'm not discouraging that, because actually, uh, you know, a storm sewer project's a good idea, um, for, to get a, a project done, however, um, you come back, uh, sometimes you come back, you, you do a patch and repair now, you come back in seven, eight years and do a sewer repair and water main repair, um, sometimes they think they're just getting hit all the time, but that's my, that's up to you if you wanna do that, but keep in mind, there's storm sewer crossings at every block, and most of the time, two at each block, so, so there would be conflicts with other utilities in the future.
Yeah, the area's from Conifer to Cedar, on Fourth and Fifth, including Conifer, Elm and Cedar, those are the ones that really take the beating. Yeah.
I would actually, you know, be okay with just, yeah, doing that section, because that is the worst part right there, and that would save us some money, I mean, save us about a hundred and fifty thousand, so...
We can take a look.
Yeah, I think, because it's really bad, and they, I mean, as long as I've been on council, they've been complaining about it, so, and I know in six years, we're gonna do the whole thing, but I think if we can suffice, suffice it for now, and just really get that section done, I think it'd be good.
So when it comes to balanced budget, um, if we had this three hundred thousand in there, could we get more areas of town, not that I wanna do to undo in six to seven years, but we know that a third of those streets, Fourth, Fifth, and Sixth, I mean, there's, there's a couple there that are pretty iffy, maybe instead of doing the whole Fourth, we just do two or three streets next to each other with this mill and overlay?
I think if you up it any more than the hundred and fifty thousand, you're either gonna have to up the street, street maintenance fee, or...
Oh.
That's kinda your option, because there is fund balance there, but we're already planning on using some of that fund balance, and there's not enough to cover another hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay, so, the three hundred thousand for this is, the three hundred thousand for this is not in the budget, it's only a hundred and fifty?
No, we'd have, we'd have to bump the street maintenance fee up to two.
Okay, thank you.
Two dollars per foot. And then we go through the debt, then we get to the water fund, page thirty-five. We included the water main looping, five fifty. We did include the rebates as an expenditure, Christina's more comfortable with showing as an expenditure for accounting. She wins on some of those arguments. She has a big blue book. That, if I say we can't, if we're, if I say we're gonna do something that, that isn't in that book, she'll throw it at me. in that book, she'll throw it at me. So no major tweaks in, in, uh, water.
So are we rate, what are we, what are we raising the water raise fund?
Just the, the two point nine CPI.
We're okay.
Yep. And currently, we're sitting okay in the water fund with, with that. We'll certainly need to make some adjustments as we go through the projects, you know, the well eight, well nine, depending if we do nine. Uh, and then water treatment plant's gonna be, be the big kicker.
Let's not be too conservative on raising that and then get behind the, it's too hard. So if we go three tab versus two point nine.
Okay.
And then done that.
Sewer fund. The only major change there was the lift station rehab, cut that from one fifty down to seventy-five. And then with the larger proposed increase in rates currently, and that again will change, I think, once, once we get through the work sessions, um, we'll take a look. Page forty, the golf course. We switched the, a putting green for the well, took out the bank stabilization, and then the pump, uh, pump and panel down there for forty.
That's electric pump?
Yep.
So I, I don't know if we've reached out to the state to find out if they're preferential to a well or pulling out of the river yet. I know that technically by permit, we should be okay either way. Um, but I, a well is a much more permanent solution, and I just kinda wanna make sure that, you know, the forty thousand could be a little more risky for us, um, when we're talking about long-term spending, and the lifespan of a well would be much longer than what the lifespan of this pump would potentially be. Um, I don't know what the, what the anticipated life is, but, uh, just something to keep in mind, that a well, you're probably gonna get fifteen to twenty years out of, uh, if it's done correctly, and I wouldn't see us getting that out of this electric pump. So, is it prudent for us to save the, the money, uh, by going with the electric versus a well? Um, I, I think it might make more sense to spend the money and, and do a well and maybe push it out over a few years, instead of just doing the electric pump floating in the river, 'cause there's gonna be a lot of headaches with that when it comes to flood season and that kinda stuff with trying to quick get it out of there and all the hassles that would come with it. But just something to think about. I know that it's a, it's a sizable difference, but, uh, from my perspective and looking into it a little bit on my end, I think it would make more sense to, to do the well, even though it is a little more money.
Hold on, Chuck.
I go back and forth. To me, this electric pump is kind of a stopgap for now.
Sure.
Doesn't have the noise, things like that. I know they have to watch it when there's a flood coming, but we know when there's a flood coming, so. I can't say that I disagree long-range. We might wanna look at the well, but, I mean, we don't have the capacity to pay for it now, but over the next five to ten years, I think we should find some of those things out, how the state views our water rates on those things.
We'd have to apply for water, additional water rates into the split rock aquifer.
And I certainly wouldn't wanna take water rights away from citizens to, you know, do that, but I think we should look into that more. But I'm supportive of doing the electric pump for now, and then I think we should find out some more due diligence on the well and water rates and all that stuff. And I would add, here, uh, today, I found out from Dennis, we've got, uh, plenty of dirt out the industrial park for your black dirt.
One quick comment about a well or the split rock aquifer for using that on the, the golf course. If it has radium in it, we can't spray it on the ground. It was a, that was one of the things, one of the comments that was brought up in the past was using well seven. Um, if we have radium in that, we can't put it on the ground. So keep that in mind, too.
That's treated?
Yeah, we have to treat it before we put it on the ground. So we can't take radium water and put it on our irrigation.
Makes no sense.
Uh, that's about it. We showed on page forty-three, the tractor air fire loan, the principal and interest. So general fund, we're looking at, uh, two hundred and eighty-eight thousand expenditures over revenue.
So what is that to your fund balance?
Well, if, if everything would hold true, you know, we'd be, we'd be decreasing our fund balance. You wanna hand, hand that out?
And then you wanna talk about Andrew too?
Christine, oh, that's right. We should talk about, uh, the proposal to hire Andrew as a full-time person. That's the first sheet that Christine is handing out. Forgot about that. So Andrews, if we were, if we were to move Andrew to full-time, he is not showing on the golf course budget, so there would be an additional cost there. It'd be offset by every reduction in part-time wages, some of it. Um, we're looking at adding Andrew as a full-time employee. You know, uh, he's currently making fifteen dollars an hour. Fifteen eighteen is the closest step that we've got on our salary scale. Um, total cost with benefits, anticipated benefits, it'd be about forty-eight thousand dollars, so about twenty-three thousand dollars additional over, uh, that's seventy-three, five sixty that's showing on page forty-one. And that would include anticipated overtime that he had last year, if it was the same. Talking with Julie, uh, she's doing some additional work to find out exempt versus non-exempt. Probably not going to be exempt. Doesn't meet, might meet the wage criteria, but doesn't meet the job duties criteria. And then the next column over would be if the wage was sixteen thirteen an hour. So that'd be a total compensation, and Benny's of about fifty-one thousand. Doesn't include, that would just be health insurance for the single. If he chose, uh, employee spouse, there'd be an additional.
Well, it'd be about.
Yeah, it's down at the bottom.
Sixteen hundred more.
The same problem I got.
I guess I'm just, uh, a little bit confused on how it's based on, it's based on two thousand and eighty hours, correct?
Yep.
Okay, see, that's where basically eighteen hundred hours is what he, like last year, if you look, is what he put in, so. Um, I guess I didn't know, I don't, I don't know what the policy or law is on that, if that, if he can still get the benefits at eighteen hundred hours, I don't know.
Not, he wouldn't get full benefits.
Okay.
He would get prorated.
Okay.
Benefit, so instead of, you know, us paying five hundred and twenty-three dollars a month, that would be prorated, he'd have to pick up some of that.
Okay. Like I said, I'm, I'm just looking at, uh, options, 'cause he's an asset to the golf course, just to keep him, keep him with, with us, um, just, just looking for, towards the future, so.
Did we ask him what was important?
Well, I think, you know, he's not really looking for a big raise, I think, the benefits, and then there's other options that we can possibly do to incentivize him to, instead of, you know, bumping up to two thousand and eighty hours, so.
Well, I think, I don't know exactly what the numbers are, but I think we need to do something for him. I've been a proponent of that for a long time.
You know, like I said before, he was, I think, bottom twenty percent of the survey that we did, so.
I bet you're white, you're stuck around.
Well, that's kinda why I'm coming to the council right now, just to see what we can do. I don't know the exact, like I said, where I'm confused on is the hours, 'cause in January and February, basically, you know, there's not much going on at the golf course, obviously, so.
So where did we come up with the two thousand and eighty?
Two thousand and eighty hours is a standard work week for a full-time employee. If you're less than that, you're not gonna be a full-time staff.
But he can't be exempt, then he's not gonna be full-time, right?
Is he gonna be salaried or hourly? He's gonna have to be hourly.
He'd be hourly.
See, and that's the other thing, I guess I'm confused on, 'cause about, I don't remember how many years ago it was, ten years ago, we had a pro shop manager who was on salary.
And, and shouldn't have been, so.
I don't know if the laws have changed.
We have to follow state laws, so if we're working with Julie, and Julie's working on what we can even possibly do up there for Andrew and what he, where we're at on that, um, looking at it, he's not gonna be able to be salaried, 'cause he doesn't have the duties to, to be a salaried employee. Um, what we, what you struggle with is in the offseason, January, February, you're gonna have deductions, you have health insurance, you have those kinda things where you're not doing any hours in January and Feb- February, then you're not really considered a full-time employee. So we have, we are citywide, so we have full-time employees, so you can't treat him any different. He still has to be considered a full-time employee, which is twenty-eighty hours a year. So we're looking at laws and, and our rules and our personnel manual and, and seeing what we need to follow on that.
So we don't know that yet. We're still determining all that.
We're still looking at it, but, I mean, we've got a number of people that work part-time. We don't give them benefits. It would be very difficult to select one person and say, you get Bennys even though you're not a full-timer.
Can we move him, like those two months or so, can we move him somewhere else and have him help out somewhere else within the city?
You know, uh, another option to take a look at, and I'm not a big proponent of it, is comp time. So instead of paying out overtime, uh, he would improve comp time hours to pay through, I, I don't think, I don't, I'm not sure if he'd have a tough time getting the two thousand and eighty hours combining comp time with the hours that he puts in during the summer.
Like, Julie just mentioned that could be setting a precedent, too.
Yep.
If you open up for him, you're gonna have, open up for everybody.
Yep.
So, keep that in mind.
Riley, how many, do you have any extra seats and trucks for pushing snow?
He actually does that right now for a guy in the winter months, so.
That's, I was just gonna say, I know last year, we spent about eighteen thousand dollars on, or we put in the budget for eighteen thousand to, to outsource snow removal. Um, that might be something where we could rent a snow plow and truck or something and set him in it and get him some hours this winter. Again, I don't wanna set a precedence, but if he is a full-time staff member and, you know, Zane, I mean, if you wanted to push snow, have at it too, or whatever, but, I mean, you guys are, are putting in the time, so. Um, the other option is, is there anything else that we could be doing in the golf course in the offseason in January and February, that he could be in that pro shop doing something to earn some sort of revenue? Uh, I continue to look at the golf course, and, um, it's about getting more people on the greens. It's a fixed-cost, uh, type business, so any sale that you make is, is an additional money in the bank, so.
So if we. If we're gonna have a trouble with the benefit piece of it, do we just gross up his hourly wage and compensate him that way, and then he just has to take care of his benefits himself, like he's doing now?
My father-in-law tried doing that with his, uh, employees, 'cause he's a small business, and he was gonna give them a stipend or whatever he, they wanted to call it for insurance, and he got nailed by his tax guy. So I know that you have to be really careful with, with that. Now, in this case, if you took him from fifteen to seventeen dollars an hour, if, if the thought process was that we were trying to help him out with insurance, I don't know where that would go.
What about the last time, Zane, you did mention that we don't charge for scoring?
Well, that's another option, you know, where it really doesn't come out of our budget, but the, the golf outing or the customer will pay for it. Right now, not every golf outing, um, takes advantage of us doing the scoring for them, they'll do it. But a lot of them do, but I think that's something that we could maybe charge for, so much per person, and that could maybe supplement his, you know, give him an incentive, 'cause it, he's really instrumental in the golf outings, and the golf outings are becoming more and more part of our business, and it, uh, you know, requires a lot of, a lot of extra work, so. I mean, that's just an option, and I'm pretty comfortable that we can, I could sell that, basically.
Would that about cover his, the health insurance?
Um, I figure, figured it would, if we, if we did it and most of them agreed to it, it'd probably add about anywhere from five to seven thousand.
I don't think the issue is trying to cover it. I think the issue is the part-time versus full-time is what I'm.
Well, that.
I'm a proponent of, of doing what we need to do with Andrew, and I'm a proponent of doing this, so just saying, if there's another option of bringing in more income, there's a way to do it.
In regard to the overtime, if he's considered an employee at twenty-eighty, would he actually get overtime? So these numbers, even though he's working more hours to begin with, is most likely gonna get overtime based on.
He will, during busy weeks.
Just during the summer, it's just, yeah, June, July, August especially.
Are there other ways to use him throughout the year, then, for those times where it's slow, such as weddings or meetings or?
Well, one thing we could do is we could, you know, we could keep the, the pro shop open. You know, it's just that, be pretty boring up there for, you know.
But then we have the expense of the light and the lighting and all that, you know.
Exactly, so then, you know, like.
And it sounds like he has a, a job in the winter with, with somebody else, so.
He helps out with snow removal.
Yeah, I guess I would be much more in favor of giving him a sizable raise to get him where he should be for what he does for us. And, uh, I mean, 'cause this is a huge commitment, we're talking about doubling, um, what he's making, and he's not, and he would be a part-time employee still, so I would, I would be much more.
Well, basically, ten-month employee, I guess. I guess that's considered, to me, it, when I, when I look at the operations and the amount of work he does, I don't consider that part-time. But that's just, because we have a unique business out there, it's not, you know, it's not, you know, a hundred percent every month, you know.
So how do they get away with that? In the school system, they have ten-month contracts, but they're considered full-time employees.
Right, like a assist, or like a AE, I think, thirty-five, nine months, and they work thirty-five hours a week. So I guess that's why I was confused, too. I don't understand the difference.
It depends on the employee. I know Hyvee does it, too. They have, they have it set where a full-time employee is considered at thirty hours. We aren't. Also, I believe, I don't know if the school does, but we don't have an ACA, um, benefit plan either, health insurance benefit plan either. I'm trying to remember where Julie got that in at, but, um, but yeah, the school's different, because they have, you have to get thirty hours to be full-time.
Just for clarification, uh, this would be thirty-one thousand dollar change, because we should assume that his wife will take insurance? Is that, I mean, not a fair assumption at some point, that, so we should technically think that it's, this is gonna be thirty-one thousand, and if it's not, is that correct?
Year one is only gonna be, um, seventeen hundred dollars more, if the spouse has it.
Oh, I see. So on the very bottom, where it says seven thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five forty, what is?
That would take place of, uh, sixty-two hundred. Yeah.
Thank you.
So, not to dwell on the topic too long, but I think there's some potential use, uh, for his talents to also do some marketing of the golf course in the offseason as well. There's definitely some things that we could be doing there to try and, um, promote the golf course, be prepared. I don't know all the ins and outs of it, Chuck, you probably know better, but, you know, is there something that we could be doing in the offseason for promotional, where, you know, we could be, even if it's ten hours a week or something, you know, I don't know how that works, but, you know.
That's actually, several years ago, that's what we asked Zane to do, is to go to the outings and go to the.
That's where, and our outings are, I mean, not that I'm solely responsible for that, but every year, it seems like, and we're gonna end up getting more and more, too, because Spring Creek's gonna be closing soon, and them outings gotta go somewhere. Partly, the reason why we're getting more is because Great Life and Willow Run kinda cut back on that, because their members couldn't play, so, you know, the outings are going to other courses, and we're one of them, so.
Well, is this something that we can, um, you know, I don't know what the number is, but put a number in, so we can get it in the budget, and then kinda try to work our way through it?
Yeah.
So it's in there?
I, I would recommend at this point in time, putting in the, the whole cost for a full-time employee.
You know, and the other thing, the other thing, too, I mean, just to help the budget, I mean, I'm, we're willing to, you know, reprioritize, whether it be the putting green, if we need to, you know, look at that down the road farther, or, you know, I know the, the pump situation is something that's kinda, essentially. is something that's kind of essential, it's high on the priority list, so, I mean, but we could always go back to the gas pump that we're doing now and try to cover up the noise, you know, we save another thirty-five thousand there, but, you know, we just, you know, you got, I guess you just got to prioritize.
I'm supportive of moving forward at this, and if we need to tweak it, we can, but I would urge all of us to keep in mind that, again, this is a good succession planning to get somebody in place, whether it's Andrew or somebody else, we need to think of that, too. Would we also add in then the possibility of the future revenue with the scoring that you're talking about to get a true value of what the actual cost is, or?
Right.
Yeah, well, we could take a look at that.
I guess that was my, that was my option to propose to the council if we didn't go the benefit route, because that would help, you know, right. I mean, I'm looking at the budget, basically, so.
I think you should proceed with that, in regard.
So we're going to put in for the full-time, full-time wage at this point?
Yep.
And work it from there. Okay.
The other question is, on your sheet is the general fund reserves, it kind of did a history there on that first sheet of where we've been and where, where we're at now. It's kind of gone up and down.
What's the, what did they tell us at that conference the goal was, Christina? Six months of expenses?
It's kind of what we've always looked at, is you want, want about six months, and it, well, at the meeting, too, I said it just depends on the city. I feel to be comfortable we're at six months. So next year's budget is six point three million, so we need to be in that three point one area, range. The second page is kind of projection on where I feel we'll be at at the end of the year, and it's really hard to estimate, depending on where sales tax comes in, depending on if all expenditures get spent, but looking at that around four million range at the end of the year.
So if we dipped our reserve a couple hundred thousand, we would still have a cushion based on these numbers. Well, Christine and I were at this conference, this budgeting conference, and, you know, there's a fine line between having too much cash and obviously not enough cash. I think we've been very conservative over all these years, we've never not passed, we've never not forced a balanced budget. But I'm okay this year because I think we're spending in some areas where we really need to spend, like that, you know, the streets and some of that stuff, so I could go, I could go along with that this year.
I don't have any heartburn. So, based on that dialogue of trying to keep six months, as long as we're not dipping below that in any way, shape, or form, I would have no issue using some of those reserves to help balance the budget as well. I think it's prudent for us to be active next year when it comes to the street projects and really drive after that. And we're going to be carrying over some of this fund from this year on projects that we would, we're not able to complete, so I think one of the big keys with this is to make sure that we're bunch, we're bidding projects at the right time of year so we don't run into the expensive projects like we did last year, so that's one of the pieces that I'll be looking at pretty heavily, I guess, from my standpoint, is make sure we're getting everything bid in January and February like we should, so then we can protect that, but.
We also have... There's always things that come up, no matter what.
One other item to keep in mind when you're looking at dipping into fund balances, it's not a bad thing if you do it for one-time costs, but if you're dipping into fund balances for ongoing operations and maintenance, that's not a good thing.
So let's talk about that. So what would we have for one-time costs? We've got the space study.
Yep, you got the space study, you've got the drainage study, digital signs, one-time cost, so.
And I agree with you, that's a really good point.
Yep. You know, the, I'd like to say the loader's a one-time cost, but I'm assuming Raleigh's going to want another one in another ten or twelve years.
Ten years.
You know, if it's capital projects, one-time cost, it's not a bad thing to dip into reserves. Like I said, if it's ongoing to pay for salaries or something like that, then it's not a good, then you're unsustainable.
So could we, so we had talked a lot about kind of that storm, could we do a one-time pull from that storm, from the general fund reserves that we're pulling out to establish a storm fund? And then we could fund those projects, is that about that three hundred thousand range, and that's what the deficiency will be? Would that be the right way to do that as a one-time fund establishment, or?
We'd probably have to look at that. So if that's, if that's where we're at, we'll fix or put in the numbers, Christine will write up the ordinance, and that'll be, we may give you an update Thursday after the briefing meeting, but we'll run with it, so.
May I ask a question? I have a question about the fire department.
Mm-hmm, oh, yep.
On page, where is it now? On page twenty-one. So it looks like everything went up pretty substantially from them.
Well, it equals, it equals our CPI plus growth.
Okay. Because what about, like, what new equipment are they buying this year? Do we know?
That I don't.
Okay.
I can ask them for their replacement schedule.
Yeah, I would like to see that, because I know we've asked for that before.
I agree.
I would like to see that and just see again when they get the audit back, all that. I think we need to keep on top of that.
Well, let's have...
Especially like, yeah, how they're spending money and all that. Not that I don't trust them, but I just wanted to check, keep on it. We've been on now for a few years, so.
So let me ask you guys that have to balance this budget all the time and work with this, are you comfortable if we do, use some of the reserves this year?
That's, that's a council decision.
Well, but you have to manage, Jen.
No, you guys are...
We, we have, you know, a million and a half in, it's, cash is king, I mean, let's be real, but we certainly have, you know, if you wanted to buy, designated versus undesignated fund balance, you know, if you look at it, I would call the half of the operating costs or the six months operating cost is designated. So you've got about a, projected to be, what, a million and a half or so in undesignated fund balance?
We're only talking two or three hundred thousand.
Correct.
Well, I can't say I'm happy about it, but I... Struggle with, you know, we're just behind on stuff, and I think we have to finally bite the bullet. And then we got banker Bob down here that wants to spend money hand over fist.
It just slipped out.
So like I said, if it's, if it's not an ongoing operational issue, it's fine.
I've been called worse.
It's, it's better than the city administrator, Mitchell, they called her the slasher in the paper. I can't remember what she proposed. She, yeah, she proposed cutting something that was near and dear to, yes, I can't, I can't remember what it was, but yes, she was the slasher in the paper.
Salaries.
No, it wasn't salaries, it was, it was something I probably would have looked at and went, uh, no, we can, we can, I think that was the mental health one, so.
So what I'm hearing is we're going to use reserves for the close to three hundred thousand, and then to put Andrew in the golf course and see what we can do on that.
I think we're really putting in a worst-case scenario, because we're really grossing up the golf course, so.
We always do.
And we don't always spend all of our money, so I think, you know, we probably won't even use it.
And we'll also take a look at a lease on the, on the loader.
If sales tax is down next year, then we'll just have to hold that.
Yep, if sales tax is down, you know, we monitor that monthly. If we see a downturn in sales tax revenue and we're not going to meet the two point nine, we will certainly have that discussion as to what's getting put on hold. I think Chuck asked me the other day, why, why do we bring, like, equipment back to the council if it's included in the budget? Well, that's why, just in case revenues are down, you got to tighten your belt, even though you need the equipment, sometimes you don't, delayed, deferred maintenance. In the old days, cities would arbitrage. We'd go borrow money at five percent, invest it at ten percent, pay off the loan and make, but the feds put a kibosh on that for some odd reason.
So this is, that available cash, we can see it's growing, so I guess that's kind of why, I guess I'm a little more conservative about it. You know, we've grown it from, in the course of the last eight years, from a million to basically five million, so, you know, that's, the trouble is, is cash sitting there isn't gaining us anything, so we just as well use it, so.
This is the first year...
We went from eight point nine to four million, you know.
They can attest, this is the first year we've really spent money. All right, anything else for the good of the cause?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Housman, second by Wakeville to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are done.